Everybody's ready?
I'm ready.
We're ready.
Good evening. This is the council meeting, the caucus meeting for March twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-five. Presiding Officer of the Council, Madam Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed in the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted on the bulletin board in the city clerk's office and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in council chambers, City Hall, two sixty High Street, at five-thirty. Right now is five-thirty-six. The council meeting will follow the caucus and closed session. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. Should you need to make a telephone call, please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Present.
Councilwoman Morales?
Present.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Present.
Councilman Puchel?
Present.
Council President Tejeda?
Present. Ordinance: Public hearing, five minutes maximum per speaker, per ordinance. Number one, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, to amend, and an ordinance entitled, an ordinance designating restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped persons. Ordinance number three-eighty-eight-five, an amendment adopted July second, nineteen-eighty-five, also known as Chapter two-fifty-five A of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy, and this is about deletions. Number two, an ordinance to amend, an ordinance creating a special improvement district within the City of Perth Amboy, and designating a district management corporation. Ordinance number seven-seventy-six-nine-five, as amended, adopted July seventeen, nineteen-ninety-five, also known as Chapter three-eighty-one of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. Number three, refunding bond ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy and the County of Middlesex, New Jersey, providing for the refunding of all or a portion of certain general improvement refunding bonds, series twenty-fifteen of the city appropriating eighteen million dollars, therefore, and authorizing the issuance by the city of one or more series of refunding bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed eighteen million for financing the cost thereof. Agenda: Public comments. Citizens may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizens shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of five minutes. Minutes: Regular council meeting, January ten, twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-four, February fourteen, twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-four, March thirteen, twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four, April ten, two thousand and twenty-four, and special council meeting, March twenty, two thousand and twenty-four. Report. Jill A. Goldie, CFO of Controllers, submitted the following reports. Check registry, register report for the month of February two thousand and twenty-five, and the total amount of fifteen million, one hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars with sixty-one cents, and the investment report for the month of February two thousand and twenty-five. And I think, Jill, can you come up and speak on the items that we have? Oh, wait a minute. It was amended from the one that I have. That was my old one. But also, let me just, there's the investment report for month of February two thousand and twenty-five, and summary of the proposals on the writing services prepared by the city's financial advisor. And she will be speaking on the ordinance that we have in front of us, and also item R-one-fifty-three, R-one-fifty-four, and R-one-fifty-five, correct?
And one-fifty-six.
And one-fifty-six. Okay. So, any question that the council may have about it can address it with her or the professionals that are present today.
Thank you, Council President. As we've already noted, there are several items on the agenda for city council considerations this evening. I wanted to provide you a summary. First, there is a refunding bond that has the public hearing and final adoption of the ordinance. That's before you, as well as two other resolutions related to the refunding. We also have two resolutions related to a bond sale of general obligation bonds, which include general capital improvements and utility fund improvements. First, I'd like to go through the refunding bonds. In May of two thousand and seven, the city issued forty-one million, seven hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred dollars of general improvement bonds. Twenty-nine million of that issue was to cover a portion of the construction of the public safety complex, representing about almost seventy percent of the total issue. The remaining twelve million, seven hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred dollars was to permanently fund several ordinances for which we were issuing temporary financing at the time, and the rates became such that it was better to permanently finance those. Those ordinances that were being funded through the notes were covered various improvements, such as road paving and reconstruction, park improvements, equipment purchases for various departments throughout the city, construction of the Veterans War Memorial, improvements to Bayview Park and the animal shelter, and a citywide fuel depot. In March of two thousand and fifteen, twenty-four million, five hundred thousand of the two thousand and seven bonds were refunded, which primarily represented the outstanding balance of the public safety complex portion. This two thousand and fifteen series is now able to be refunded should the sale reduce the existing debt service by three percent or more over the existing term of the bonds. Those bonds currently go out through the year twenty thirty-seven. Back earlier, actually, at the end of last year, the city received two unsolicited underwriter proposals from NW Financial and RBC Capital. In February, the city issued requests for proposals for bond underwriting services to eight firms. Six of those eight firms submitted proposals, including the two whom had previously provided the unsolicited proposal. The summary of the proposals has been submitted as a report for today's agenda that includes recommendation of PNC Capital Markets as the underwriter for the refunding bonds based on providing the best overall proposal. Based on the initial proposal from them, we're hoping to have potential savings of over nine hundred thousand dollars in interest cost over the remaining term of the bonds. With regards to this refunding, there are three actions requested of the city council today regarding the refunding. The first one is a standard form of sale resolution, which authorizes the mayor and CFO to execute the refunding bond sale. That is Resolution one-fifty-three. Second is a resolution to appoint PNC Capital Markets as the underwriter, which is Resolution one-fifty-six. And as well, we have the public hearing and final adoption of the refunding bond ordinance itself. Moving on to the general obligation bonds, the city is looking to sell eight million, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and four dollars and nineteen cents of general obligation bonds, and those consist of the following: four million, sixty-three thousand, one hundred dollars of general improvement bonds. These improvements were approved in the two thousand and twenty-four capital budget, which was adopted as part of the city's two thousand and twenty-four overall budget. The ordinance to authorize these improvements and the debt funding thereof was adopted back in October of two thousand and twenty-four. It includes road paving and reconstruction, equipment for DPW, fire, police, and OEM, IT upgrades, playground equipment, and a bus for the Office on Aging. We also have included four million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and four dollars and nineteen cents of water utility, water wastewater utility bonds. This is the combination of several ordinances that were issued from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty-three that had unfunded balances, and those are being combined with the two thousand and twenty-four capital budget for the water utility. That two thousand and twenty-four capital budget included cleaning and lining of mains, the Conbury Boulevard Water Main Project, pump replacements, and other system repairs. We also have four hundred thousand of parking utility bonds. Those improvements were initially approved, initially approved, in the two thousand and twenty-four capital budget and authorized by ordinance in October of two thousand and twenty-four, including repaving and resurfacing parking lots and the renovation of the parking utility office. And the last portion is three hundred thousand Marina utility bonds. Again, those improvements were approved in the capital budget in two thousand and twenty-four and authorized by the ordinance in October of two thousand and twenty-four, to include construction of an ADA ramp at the Marina, dredging around the Marina area, and other facility upgrades. I just wanted to point out, this is the first time that the Marina Utility is actually authorizing debt to do capital improvements and capital projects for the Marina. With regards to the total general obligation bonds, there are two actions requested of the council today. One is a resolution combining the various issues of the water wastewater bonds into a single issue. That is Resolution one-fifty-five. And secondly, a standard form of sale resolution, which authorizes the mayor and CFO to execute the bond sale, which is Resolution one-fifty-four. If you have any more technical questions, I wanted to let you know that Neil Grossman, who's the city's financial advisor, and Chris Langhart, who is the city's bond counsel, they're here this evening as well, if you need to ask anything of them.
Anybody have any question? I think I'm okay with everything that is you presented. If the advisors have any, the professionals have anything to add that could help us, that would be also accepted. You have anything that Jill didn't cover?
No, that was very comprehensive for what?
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. You can come to, thank you, Jill. You can bring it up.
The refinancing that Jill laid out is very straightforward. It's just like refinancing the mortgage. It's going to be the same final maturity, but just with today's interest rates, the city should be able to, and the numbers won't be known until the sale's completed, but save somewhere between seventy-five to eighty-five thousand dollars a year, every year, for that, for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinance, first reading, no public discussion. Number one, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, amending and supplementing Chapter Four Administration of Government, Article twelve, Department of Human Services, Ordinance number one-fifteen-twenty-two-dash-two thousand and ten, as amended August eleventh, two thousand and twenty, of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy, to set forth regulations for the Department of Human Services, service employees, volunteers, and contract personnel to operate vehicles owned by the city. Is Kenny here? No. Diane, can you speak on that, or a little bit? I just want it, so the public has a little understanding of that particular one, or maybe disagreeing? Okay.
Right. So, with regards to this ordinance that the council president just read to us, it's involving, whether it's city employees or volunteers who drive a municipal vehicle, we're going to do a background check on their driver's license to make sure that they can drive our residents or our children, because we want to make sure that they are, whoever's driving, we want to make sure that they are safe to drive. And so, we review their record. So, let me tell you what we'll look for. So, if they have three or more motor vehicle accidents over three previous years, they will not be allowed to drive a municipal vehicle. If they have five or more CS points on their driving record, they will not be able to drive a municipal vehicle. And lastly, if they have any violations with alcohol or drugs, they will not be allowed to drive a municipal vehicle. And the question was proffered earlier by Councilman Puchel, and it was a salient point. He was saying, well, why do we need volunteers sometime to drive the students? And I believe it was brought up that sometimes we need volunteers to drive our students within the community to different games, because sometimes parents may not be available. So, volunteers step up, and they're able to fortunately drive our children to where they need to go.
Okay. Anybody else have any question? Okay. Thank you. Number two, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, to amend, an ordinance entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Ordinance number one-ninety-four-dash-seventy-eight, as amended, adopted September nineteenth, nineteen-seventy-eight, also known as Chapter four-fourteen of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy, and this is about stops intersections.
Can you elaborate, please?
Yes, there's stop signs. It's located, the county did an assessment of the county road, and I believe it was Amboy Avenue, and the streets are delineated there. I don't have the streets. I don't know if you have a bill where we can read off the, where it says, specific intersections, but it's, I believe, maybe ten or so stop intersections where they're placing stop signs along Amboy Avenue. I just don't have them.
Yeah. Most of them are like, yeah.
That's the first, yeah, well, the first reading, yeah.
So, it's adding additional stop signs? Yeah. The, thank you.
Get the mic closer to, I guess, it's kind of away.
The stop sign, the intersection of Keene Street and Amboy Avenue, the stop sign will be on Keene Street. Alpine Street and Amboy Avenue, it'll be on Alpine Street. Myrtle Street and Amboy Avenue, the stop sign will be on Myrtle Street. Eagle Avenue and Amboy Avenue, it'll be on Eagle Street. Paterouski Avenue and Amboy Avenue, the stop sign will be on Paterouski Avenue. Meredith Avenue and Amboy Avenue, the stop sign will be on Meredith Avenue. Arnold Avenue and Amboy Avenue, the stop sign will be on Arnold Avenue. Ridgely Street and Amboy Avenue, the stop sign will be on Ridgely Street. Compton Avenue and Amboy Avenue, the stop sign will be on Compton. And Sutton Street and Amboy Avenue, the stop sign will be on Sutton.
Thank you.
Number three, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy to amend, an ordinance entitled, an ordinance designating restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped persons, Ordinance number three-eighty-eight-five, an amendment adopted July second, nineteen-eighty-five, also known as Chapter two-fifty-five A of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. This is about additions. Number four, bond ordinance amending Section three-D of bond ordinance, number nineteen-fifty-three dash two thousand and twenty, and Section three-B of bond ordinance, two thousand and four dash two thousand and twenty-one, of the City of Perth Amboy and the County of Middlesex, New Jersey, in order to amend the project descriptions. Resolution R-one-thirty-six-three-twenty-five, authorizing emergency temporary appropriation to extend the calendar year two thousand and twenty-five temporary budget in the amount of four hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars with thirty cents. R-one-thirty-seven-three-twenty-five, authorizing a two thousand and twenty-five athletic social club license to Pepino Social Club at four-twenty-four State Street, block two-thirty-two, lot twenty-eight. R-one-thirty-eight-three-twenty-five, reappointing Officer Jose Santiago to the Perth Amboy Citizen Public Safety Advisory Board as recommended by the police chief for a three-year term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven. R-one-thirty-nine-three-twenty-five, reappointing Captain Panagiotis Boulouris to the Perth Amboy Citizen Public Safety Advisory Board as recommended by the police chief for a three-year term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven. R-one-forty-three-twenty-five, approving a special permit for public entertainment to United Dominican support Perth Amboy for the Dominican festival to be held on August eighth, ninth, and tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, at the Robert Willens Athletic Field on First Street and Zdowski Parkway. R-one-forty-one-three-twenty-five, approving a special permit for public entertainment to the Committee Patriótico Cultural Puerto Rican of Perth Amboy for a festival to be held on June sixth, seventh, and eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, at Rudy Park. R-one-forty-two-three-twenty-five, authorizing return of permit fee to Freedom Forever New Jersey LLC in an amount not to exceed four hundred and thirty-five dollars with twenty cents for the Solar Project at two-seventy-sixth Oak Street. R-one-forty-three-three-twenty-five, authorizing a contract with T and M Associates to provide professional engineering services associated with scope and fees estimate for construction, administration, and inspection services associated with the city's two thousand and twenty-five road improvement program phase four in the amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand dollars. R-one-forty-four-three-twenty-five, authorizing a contract with Suburban Consulting Engineering, Inc., for professional land surveying, engineering, and environmental services for the Zdowski Park Street improvements in the amount not to exceed one hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. R-one-forty-five-three-twenty-five, authorizing a grant agreement with the Middlesex County Office of Aging and Disabled Services for the socialization recreation in the amount of six thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. R-one-forty-six-three-twenty-five, authorizing submission of an application to the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six congressionally-directed spending and community project funding programs in the amount of four million dollars to assist with park construction at the Second Street Park. R-one-forty-seven-three-twenty-five, awarding a bid to American Plumber for contracting services related to the home improvement program for six-eighty-five Elizabeth Street in the amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand dollars, two hundred and seventy, twenty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. R-one-forty-eight-three-twenty-five, amending the funding sources of R-four-seventy-nine-nine-twenty-three, accepting a bid and awarding a contract to S. Brothers, Inc., for the two thousand and twenty-three road improvement program phase two in the amount not to exceed eight hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred dollars with fifty-five cents. R-one-forty-nine-three-twenty-five, authorizing a contract with Suburban Consulting Engineering, Inc., for professional land surveying, engineering, and construction support for the Dalton Park Trailer relocation in an amount not to exceed thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. R-one-fifty-three-twenty-five, authorizing execution of an indemnification agreement with Harbor Town Terrace LLC located a summer lunch, to locate a summer lunch program. R-one-fifty-one-three-twenty-five, authorizing an extension of the agreement with the Middlesex County Office of Human Services to continue services in the youth mentoring program through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, for a grant amount of sixty-six thousand, two hundred dollars and rescinding R-seventy-four-two-twenty-four, two-twenty-five. R-one-seventy-one-fifty-two-three-twenty-five, authorizing a non-fair and open contract with the Community Grant Planning and Housing CGP and HLLC for provision of administrative agent services for the city's affordable housing plan in the amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. R-one-fifty-three-three-twenty-five, determining the form and other details of not to exceed eighteen million dollars general improvement refunding bonds, series two thousand and twenty-five of the City of Perth Amboy, in the County of Middlesex, New Jersey, or such other amount as determined by the Chief Financial Officer, to accomplish the refunding on the terms required by the local finance board pursuant to NJAC five, column thirty dash two-point-five, and consistent with the refunding provisions of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen-eighty-six, and to provide for the sale and delivery of such bonds to an underwriter as determined by the Chief Financial Officer. R-one-fifty-four-three-twenty-five, determining the form, other details of eight million, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, general obligation bonds, series two thousand and twenty-five, consisting of four million, sixty-three thousand, general improvement bonds, four million, one seventy-five thousand, water wastewater utility bonds, and four hundred thousand parking utility bonds, and three hundred thousand Marina utility bonds of the City of Perth Amboy, in the County of Middlesex, New Jersey, and providing for their sale. R-one-fifty-five-three-twenty-five, providing for the combination of certain issues of water wastewater utility bonds of the City of Perth Amboy, in the County of Middlesex, New Jersey, into a single issue of bonds aggregating four million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand in principal amount. R-one-fifty-six-three-twenty-five, appointing PNC Capital Markets LLC for the sale of general improvement refunding bonds by the City of Perth Amboy, in the County of Middlesex, New Jersey. R-one-fifty-seven-three-twenty-five, authorizing professional service agreements with the qualifying city planners who submitted responses to requests for qualification for calendar year two thousand and twenty-five. Then we have some communications. And then, closed session resolution, R-one-thirty-five-three-twenty-five, authorizing a closed session at the March twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-five council meeting to discuss the following. Do you have anything?
Whatever.
Okay. So, there's no closed session? Anybody has anything to discuss? No?
I do. I just wanted to review, like, the board vacancies. I know that's something we discussed the last time. And that's pretty much it on my end.
Okay. Do we have to do a closed session for that? Because, are you talking about any?
The advisory boards, and just making sure that all of our boards are fulfilled. I know that we were discussing that at the last closed session.
If we're discussing a specific appointment, you can do that in closed session, but if it's, we can probably do, if there's vacancies, probably just a memo.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I've sent the memos, yeah.
Yes. So, we, I was just talking to Vicky prior the meeting. Probably next meeting, we're going to have the park council. Probably next meeting, we're gonna have the park council and.
Perfect.
Or any other board that maybe that we can get to come, you know, for, for interviews or assigning, reassigning the, the people that are already on it. So I mean, if there's something beyond that.
No, no, that's perfect, just to make sure.
Okay, so for closed session, we don't have a closed session, but I need a motion for public portion, five minutes maximum per speaker. I need a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, it's open to the public for.
Ken Ballot, three five nine Brook Avenue. Last meeting, and the meeting we talked about Pushner, a lady from the building says they don't have a CO for landing check. Now, I would like to know if there's a full CO for a building that was built in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, and we just gave him a pilot with no money for kids. And I would like to know how much it cost a day for those crossing yards out there. After the new high school, the traffic control, police overtime, and everything is out. Now, since politicians took all the credit for building that high school, are they gonna ask for an investigation? Is Assemblyman Lopez and Assemblyman Coghlan, our representative, who's taken the, all the praise for it, the basketball courts can't be used, had a leak? They claim that the other basketball court, the water's popping up, so they can't use the courts. You got the roof leaks ready, paint is peeling, handles are falling off the doors. The heat, people complaining, it's so cold in there, the heat work, so maybe that's why the pipe broke, and, but that should've been done. It's a brand new stinking building, brand new. Let's see, paint peeling, the heat, roof is leaks, paint peeling. So, it's so funny that Jill brings up those bombs for two thousand and seven. Well, that's the problem, when those bombs are given out, the build that garbage in that police and fire park. It leaks, it probably still leaks. I should, I guarantee the jail cells still don't work properly and everything else. It was garbage when they built that building, but nobody that was involved in that administration had the guts to tell the new administration what was wrong with that building. So we gonna have another garbage building out there in that school? Or do you have the guts to write a letter to the assemblywoman and the assembly president who took praise for getting this money to have the building looked at and have an investigation? Because if water's coming up from the ground, that could be. My brother was involved in building schools, and he told me that, you know, there should've been, that should've been taken care of, and that's an easy thing of just drilling down the ground and check that there's no water pressure, but whatever. So the question is, the question is, are you gonna have the guts to write that, or we're gonna have another piece of garbage there? Because nobody has the guts to take care of it now, a brand new building. It's a brand new building. You all sit there, took your pictures out there, all praise everything, but it's garbage what I'm hearing. And this is from teachers. So the teachers, I don't know. And then it was another story, you had about taxes going up. Middletown's taxes are going up ten percent. You know what the average people pay in their, their taxes that don't have an abode district? You know what the average amount of money is? Fifty-two percent of their budget is school tax. Our school taxes is like ten percent. They're paying fifty-two percent. So every time I talk to people in Middletown and Monroe, I thank them for paying my taxes. Then they all just jump back and say, what do you mean? I said, we don't pay no taxes, we're twenty-four million or whatever. You're paying my taxes. Here's my bill. What? And, and now I sit there explaining, hey, my council gives pilots and no money for the schools. What? No money for the schools? I said, yeah, we give the money away. We're a rich little town. You guys are gonna pay my taxes. And they're switching. So every time I go around, I carry my tax bill around with me when I know I'm gonna go see certain people. And I'm gonna write some letters to some certain town councils, and I'm gonna say, thank you for paying my bills, because you guys keep giving the money away. It's disgusting. Fifty-two percent, the regular people pay. And in Middletown, right now, the story is it's gonna go up five percent, just for the school tax. So you guys all sit there and give the money away, and whatever, you don't care, but the rest of the state, there's a new world out there. You might get a new governor, you got a new president that's gonna change everything around. So if those taxes go up really big, it is on you. It is on you, the council, if the taxes go up. And you can't say it's the board's fault for raising the tax. It's gonna be your fault. And Councilman Puchio, when I said the last time about kids walking, it's not those high school kids. It's those young kids that used to be on my corner that don't get the bus anymore, that have to walk in the cold and the bad weather. It's the young kids. And now I'm hearing stories about people on the scooters who got their kids on the handlebars, and they're riding on scooters and taking their kids to the schools. How safe is that? And who's doing anything about that? So one day, when somebody has an accident with a scooter and the kid lands up getting seriously hurt, it's on you guys, because you could've got the millions of dollars from the pilots and used that money and stopped the layoffs in the school.
Okay, before the next speaker, I would like to address a few things that you just mentioned there. First of all, if you want to know exactly how the building is, what's happening in that building, I think you should go and address it with the Board of Education. I understand it's, it's everybody's responsibility, but I, in, in this town, but also, if you want to know the details of what's happening in those schools, I think the first place to request an information about everything will be the Board of Education.
You were on that board when that school was picked out.
No, 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 no. I, I let you speak. I let you speak.
You're right, but you're not questioning what I'm saying.
No, 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 I'm not questioning what you're saying. I'm telling you where to get the right answer for your concern. Another thing is, and just for the public information, I know that he keeps saying we're giving out the pilots with no money for the school, but this, I don't know what happened in the past, but this council has different plans for the pilots' money that is coming, gonna come in, and that is gonna be addressing part of the school money that is, that they need. But it was, it will be assigned to certain projects that we determine that we will be, that they will be needing help with. So I just wanted to clarify that. Go ahead.
Madam President.
Yes.
Mr. Ballot, you're right. I was the president of the board when this high school was built, and my colleague to my left was the president after me. One thing you could count on, the only thing we were responsible for was purchasing the land. And then we were locked into purchasing the land because we couldn't get land anywhere else. That's the first thing. The second thing is, the SDA picked the building. The state built it. We had no say in what went in the building and how the building was built. It was a state architect, a state builder. So that building is under guarantee. So if there's anything wrong with the building.
They're fixing it.
They're fixing it. So at the end of the day, you know, I guess you, you could come up to the microphone and say all those things that you want to say, but at the end of the day, the citizens of Perth Amboy didn't pay for that building. The citizens of New Jersey paid for it. It came from the SDA. And as far as all that other stuff is concerned, you know what? Everybody cried for years, we need a new high school, we need a new high school, we need a new high school. Now they got one. And unfortunately for us, that was the only place that the state was willing to build it at, was on the Delaney site. And we would've had a high school way before that if the previous administration, before Mayor Diaz took over and the boss administration didn't screw around, they would've had a high school up there. And, and those, and, and those apartments would've never been built. But at the end of the day, at the end of the day, to come up here and make it seem like it's our fault, it's not our fault, the state built it.
You allowed it to go on. You allowed that.
No, we did not allow it to go on, Mr. Ballot.
Yes. No.
No.
No, we don't.
That's not true.
So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, your, your time is up. Go ahead.
This is what I call transparency. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Puchio. This is what I call transparency. You have a good debate here. Wonderful. Thank you.
Go ahead.
You should be proud of yourself. Orlando Perez, Perth Amboy, New Jersey. I want to bring up something very interesting I made. See this resolution here, one fifty three dash three, you know, eighteen million dollar general improvement, uh, refunding bonds, okay? And what got me was the local finance board, okay? Just bear with me. Number one, when you, you filed an application, right, for this money? Am I correct? Did the application process go through? And then the finance board has to look at it? Who is the finance board? Who this group would be said, okay, you have enough money? How's your, what do you got for collateral? Whatever the system is. Because years ago, okay, before Wilder, Mayor Wilder, the city wouldn't dent because this finance board was a political hack back then. No problem, Joe, you get whatever you want. And the city went almost to four hundred million dollars in debt. I don't know, you're still paying for the debt, I don't know. Well, what got me is, okay, I understand you gotta borrow money. Where is the oversight here? You know, I'm acting like I'm the inspector general, sorry. But who is gonna really look at this carefully and do an oversight? The last thing you need is to go into debt. I know you want to do some fooling, but you don't want to go into debt. And I warn you, in April, look at it in April, because that's gonna come out the third, you know, the first quarter of everything. I don't want to see this town go into debt. Look all the projects they did, borrow money, and boom, what happened? We're two hundred million dollars in debt when Wilder got in. How are we gonna pay this? We gonna have a cake sale? That's the thing, I don't want to see the town go into debt. And I'm not blaming nobody, but there has to be a, a good oversight on this. You know, there's wheels and deals are made, but be careful with these things. And I'm, you know, I'm not blaming anybody, you noticed that. I'm just saying be very careful, because that pen is very deadly, that pen could be. You don't want to go into debt, I'm telling you. And things are gonna get tight, real tight. Taxes going up, I just heard now the electric's gonna go up, that's gonna be a big bomber. People in this town can no longer, they're squeezing, the working for the seniors, really, the food lines are getting bigger and bigger, they can't, they just can't squeeze it. I feel sorry for some of these people when I see it, when I get the tax bill, the word of next bill, they're gonna freak out, seriously. There has to be a very serious oversight on these things, on the bondings and all this stuff. Be careful, I'm telling you, be careful with this stuff. I hear a lot of crazy stories, how towns went under, under. Guess what? We're seizing all your stuff. You, you can't pay, or whatever, however it works, and I'm still looking into this. I'm still gonna look into this thing. I got friends, they know how this, this thing works. And then I'll see, you know, how it's gonna come out. You know, I just hope the best and all, but please, don't put this town in financial debt. Don't do it. You can't be doing this. This town suffered enough already in debt. Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead. I mean, were you here when she gave the explanation of those?
No offense.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Joe.
No offense taken. As I mentioned earlier, this is not new debt being issued. This is existing debt that we are trying to refinance essentially. As our financial advisor said, it's like refinancing your mortgage to get a lower interest rate. We're actually gonna be saving money on interest for the term, the, the remaining term of the existing bond by refinancing it through this refunding. We do not have to go to the local finance board and ask for permission, this debt is already existing. All we have to do, once we issue the refunding bonds, is report to the local finance board as to the three percent or greater savings that we achieved under the law in order to refinance it in the first place.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Sacra Gonzalez, and I live at one seventy seven Mark Street. Now, my concern is a safety issue in this town. That's a pedestrian, when you walk around here, you, you should, you guys should take a walk downtown. This e, e-bikes and scooters, and some of those real big bikes that weigh over two hundred pounds, they go very fast, twenty, twenty-five miles an hour. And you're taking your life at risk when you're walking sometimes downtown, because you don't see them come. They come behind you. Those bikes are not meant, the sidewalks are meant for pedestrians to walk, not for people to be scooting right by you or going very fast. You know, I used to, I'm retired, I enjoy walking down the sidewalks of the town, but now, behind my mind, it's like walking with a wrist, you don't know if they're gonna take your leg off, you're gonna get hurt real bad. I might wonder, my, does people have insurance registrations? Yeah, because somebody's gonna get hurt one day, it's gonna be sooner or later. And like I said, you got some of those bikes that weigh over two hundred pounds, some of those guys are grown men over three hundred pounds, you get hit with all those bikes, somebody's gonna get hurt, and you're gonna, it's gonna be all over the newspaper. And, you know, I, I would get some bikes, take a walk one day around here, right around Smith Street and Madison Avenue, see how fast, how fast they go, they get with. Somebody gets hurt, little kid or whatever, it's not gonna be, it's probably, somebody's gonna get killed, and it's gonna be all over the newspaper. And my, uh, second concern is, are the taxpayers and the city libraries, if somebody gets hurt, these people have no insurance. They have no insurance in these e-bikes or whatever. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Chief, you have something to, to say about this?
Good evening, council. Actually, yesterday, I was up here a couple days ago, we had that thing with Tashi for the circulation plan, and we spoke about this also, the same complaint with the e-bikes and so forth. Uh, as far as insurance, many of them are not required, because it's a bicycle, and as we know, the state and federal government's really pushing for this alternate transportation and e-bikes and, and getting around bicycles, those types of things. So there's no specific regulations requiring for insurance or anything along those lines. As you're aware, you did some, a ordinance a couple of years ago for those. We, we have confiscated tons of those bikes, literally dozens and dozens of those motorcycles, dirt bikes, ATVs, and those types of e-bikes. We've confiscated them, and we continue to do that to this day. Additionally, there'll be some other legislation that, between myself and the fire department, we're kind of putting together, primarily with the e-bikes and the scooters and for the batteries and so forth that we've spoken about. We talked about that at previous meetings, that's gonna be hopefully coming up to you by the next meeting for consideration. So a lot of these things are being addressed for the, the e-bikes and so forth. As far as the actual operation of them, again, as I mentioned, we've gone to schools before, we've spoken to schools, we've spoken to the operators of some of these bikes that were concerned with of the fire hazards and so forth that we had. So they've done, as far as safety information, we've put that out, we put a campaign out there on social media and so forth with the e-bikes, both last year, and we're putting some stuff out this year. And of course, now it's getting a little warmer, so we're gonna see them a little bit more, as well as we're gonna continue to step up the, the enforcement and the seizing of these bicycles, e-bikes and scooters, especially if they're not legal to be on the roads and so forth, and, and on the sidewalks, clearly.
Yeah. On the sidewalk, especially now that it's gonna get warmer.
Yeah.
Are we gonna have like some type of policing around that area? Because I think that will help the citizens to feel a little comfortable and also confiscate some of those.
In actuality, we're working with UEZ, there was some funds that were put aside, they were able to purchase some police vehicles for us, as well as some overtime patrols to specifically address in the UEZ areas, and that's gonna be one of their primary focuses when the officers are going to be working there. That's gonna be starting, working with Noelia around April, November time, excuse me, April, May timeframe, we'll be able to get those officers specifically out there doing those things. So we're not taking officers away from other calls or other patrol duties throughout the city, they will be specifically assigned to those business district areas, doing those types of quality of life patrols.
Okay.
Hold, hold on, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. No, I was just.
Um, it's a totally different issue. I, I know we're coming up on naming the, you know, having the ceremonies for naming the boats and Ogden Place.
Yes.
You know, there had been talk in the past, and we've had these discussions about adding to the monument outside, of, you know, officers, employees that have died while employed by the police department. If we can, if I would like to have a meeting with you sometime in the next couple of weeks, that we could sit down and talk about moving forward with, you know, adding those names to the wall.
Absolutely. You know, as we discussed, we have a spot specifically for that, we have a side for that where we could do those active duty officers that passed away while they were active duty. There is an area for that, not taking away from anyone that was killed in the line of duty, we have the ability to do that. We just have to identify the funding to be able to get those, those names engraved and so forth, which we can maybe work with the unions and maybe some donations and so forth to get that together, but yes, absolutely.
I'm sure if we talk to the right people that want to do business in town, they might be willing to help us out a little bit. But no, so I, I, I'll be in touch with you, Chief, let you know when.
Sounds great.
All right.
We planned on that when we did the, unfortunately, we had to put the last name on there, we planned for the, having that additional area to be able to do that, so.
Very good, Nick.
I'm sorry, I have one question. So the gentleman, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, had mentioned that if someone were to get hurt by a male or female riding one of these bicycles, I think his question was, who would cover that? Is that, was that your question?
Yeah, a lot of these people, they don't have insurance, somebody, if he can't hurt, something, it can be hospitals piling up.
Okay.
Okay. Could you educate the, what would be the process, let's say someone was walking and then they got hurt, what would they do after that?
I certainly, I certainly don't want to give any, any legal advice, but that would be more of a civil action, as I said, they're not required to have insurance on most of them, because they're not motorized and so forth, whether it be individual claims, and then if they were in fact breaking the law when it occurred, if they were riding on a sidewalk and so forth, again, I'm sure the courts would assess appropriate liabilities to them, but we have a professional right here, so.
Okay.
As the chief mentioned, in, I believe it was the summer of twenty twenty-three, this council adopted some pretty significant regulations related to these bicycles, so it's, you know, I, I don't think there would be any exposure based on the action the city has taken and will continue to take in evaluating these, based on what the chief said today, so I think the city's in a good position, just a matter of, you know, continuing the efforts to ensure safety on the sidewalks and on the streets.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, chief.
Irish Rodriguez, Fayette Street, Perth Amboy. I don't want to hash or talk too much about what's happening with, with the new high school, but I do want to just say to the previous speakers that they should go to the meetings I have, and I realize that there's, there has been problems at the school. The same way I think, if I'm mistaken, when we built our art older high school, there was problems, okay? The SDA has been notified, the school has been working with officials, and it just takes time. And I think if you went, if that person went to the board meetings and expressed and yelled at them the way he yells comes here and yells at the council that has nothing to do with the Board of Education, maybe it'll push a little bit, or wake them up a little bit more, but I do know that they have contacted SDA, but unfortunately, state departments do take a long time, and we just have to be a little bit more patient. And on a better note is, I do see the scooters, I do see that, I drive around a lot in Perth Amboy, and I have a family that lives right in Dombrowski Drive, my daughter and her son, so I've been there in the mornings, and I know the situation is a little bit hectic, but we have to have patience, we have to have patience. We did get a free high school, which everybody wanted, and I know if people that have, that come here and yell and scream, if we had to have paid for it, if we had to raise taxes for it, they would have screamed more. So, and if, and yes, probably there is gonna be a school tax, okay? We haven't had what that one in many, many years. So if that happens, that happens, that happens in many communities, and the taxes may, may come up, and it's a school tax. It will have nothing to do with the city council, the city council has their own tax. This is a tax that, that, that the school system will be able to put on their own, without any permission from anybody here, from what I understand. So I think, you know, there is a count, at the end of, I think in two weeks, there will be a Board of Education meeting, they are advertised, and you should go and express your opinion there, thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, we should.
Madam President, I want to say something.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, I was gonna wait till the end of the other meeting, but, you know, there are people here, usually at the end of the night, nobody's here. You know, we sit up here, we've inherited problems from previous administrations, you know, things that we had no control over, you know, matter of fact, when things, you know, when that building was built, my colleague to my left was in high school, right? My colleague to the far left was in grammar school, you know? Councilwoman Morales and Council President Dejado weren't on the council, but we get yelled and screamed at, people make fun of us, they call us corrupt, you know? Not one of us is corrupt. You know, our families hear what you say about us. You know, we got elected and we took an oath. You may not like our decisions that we make, but we don't make them lightly. You know, but some of the stuff that we inherited, we had to make decisions on, like the water. Now, you know, our comptroller got together and they're gonna give us, you know, a break on, on bonds that we had nothing to do with when they were floated back in two thousand and seven, but here it is. We're cleaning it up, we're doing the right thing. You know what, at the end of the day, some of us could have left five years ago this week. I was ending my cancer treatment, my, my final chemo, my final radiation, I did not know if I was gonna live, but I'm still here, and I don't mean only breathing, I'm still here as an elected official. I could have walked into the sunset and ended up to worry about what people say about me, but as far as all of us are concerned, we're humans. We're not corrupt, we don't gain anything from this. You know, we're made fun of, I'm made fun of because I'm an old man, right? But you know what, I'm here, and I, I'm going into my seventeenth year as an elected official, and I don't regret any of it. And you know what, until the day comes and you decide not to put me here anymore, I will make decisions that I think that are right. You know what, and going, even going back to something that I know nobody likes is Kushner, we inherited that. And we don't have your money, your tax money to fight a billionaire. Because if we started doing that and we started wasting money, you'd be up here yelling at us for spending money. You know, at the end of the day, we're trying, there's some very dedicated individuals that work for this city, like Tashi Vasquez, Jill Goldie, you know, they care about this city, they could have went somewhere else. So you know what, at the end of the day, you know, you could call us stupid, maybe we don't know what we're talking about, but we're not corrupt. None of us are. So at the end of the day, have a little respect for us. You may not like us, some of you don't like us just because we sit up here. But you know, at the end of the day, we're all human and we all have family, we all have kids, we all have, well, I have grandkids. So you know what, sometimes think about what you're saying to us. And for all those podcasters out there, they got nothing better to do but make fun of us, you know what, put your name on a ballot and see if you can get up here. So, I'm sorry I took everybody's time, but you know what, at the end of the night, it's kind of disheartening that we, I talk to the camera and there's nobody here. So, but thank you for the people that are here, thank you. I'm sorry I went on and on, but sometimes I just have to let it out, so I'm sorry. Thank you.
Don't be sorry. Thank you very much, and I think it couldn't be told any, any different, and just to express the sentiment of the whole city council. I, I, I don't even feel that one of us will make a decision that is not deep in their heart for this city. I have been in different boards, and every decision that I have made, I have made it because I feel it's the best for the, for the town. And I think most of us, all of us have done the same thing. If, if you might not like what we have done, it's your opinion, but whatever, and I will take responsibility, like I said earlier in other meetings, I will take the responsibility when something doesn't work. It, if I voted for, I had a decision made based on what I thought it was the best for the community, and I'll take the blame if it came out the wrong way. But we're all here to, to fight for this community that we love, and I know that probably you are just looking at it in a different way, because you also love this town. And anyway, so we can adjourn the caucus meeting now, I need a motion to.
May I just say one thing to add to your comment, both my fellow councilmen and council president? I agree a hundred and fifty percent with everything that you had said, and thank you for that, for voicing out what we feel out here. But I just also want to add to the fact that we were also, yes, we were voted into this position, I agree, we make decisions to the best of our ability, what we feel is best for the city, but you also, I don't know if you guys realize, we also live in this city, so the decisions that we do make not only affects you, but it affects us too. Okay, if you guys have to, if we have to raise taxes, we have to pay the taxes. Do you think I want to make a decision to raise more taxes? I can't afford it either. So if it's something that we're making a decision on, it's because we feel in general, it's the best decision at the moment. And like she said, if it is, if it wasn't in the long term, later on, we will take responsibility for that, but at the moment, with the information that is given to us, this is what we feel is best for the community. And that's it, thank you, Council President, Council, who you?
Thank you.
May I have a motion to adjourn the caucus?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? Okay, we're gonna take like a five minutes break, and then we'll come back for the meeting, for the real meeting.
Good evening. This is the council meeting for March 26, 2025. Presiding Officer of the Council, Mrs. Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, posted on the bulletin board, in the City Clerk's office, and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the council chambers, City Hall, 260 High Street, right after the caucus and the closed session. Right now is 6:50 PM. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices should you need to make a telephone call. Please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Present.
Councilwoman Morales?
Present.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Present.
Councilman Puccio?
Present.
Council President Tejeda?
Present. Let's stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Lord, please watch over this governing body to make the right decision for our citizen, for our residents, and for our city. Also, I'll ask you to protect our children, our youth, protect them of any problem that they might be facing at this moment, and guide them, guide their parents and their family to help them. Protect the officers, the... all those that are defending our freedom abroad and also in our country, and protect their family. And with that, I say amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Ordinance, public hearing, five minutes maximum per speaker, per ordinance. Number one, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy, County of Meadowsex, New Jersey, to amend an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces for Use by the Handicapped Persons," ordinance number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2, 1985, also known as Chapter 255 of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy, and this is about deletions. I need a motion to open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Anybody? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? I need a motion to adopt.
Second. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number two, an ordinance to amend an ordinance creating a special improvement district within the City of Perth Amboy and designating a district management corporation, ordinance number 776-95, as amended, adopted July 17, 1995, also known as Chapter 381 of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. I need a motion to open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? I need a motion to adopt.
Second. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number three, ordinance, number three, refunding bond ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy and the County of Meadowsex, New Jersey, providing for the refunding of all or a portion of certain general improvement refunding bonds, Series 2015 of the city appropriating $18 million therefor, and authorizing the issuance by the city of one of more series of refunding bonds in the aggregate principal amount of not exceeding $18 million for financing the cost thereof. I need a motion to open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? It's open to the public.
What's the price for the lawyer fees? What's the lawyer fees? The lawyer says he's doing the bond, so what's the lawyer fees? So don't we get, when you think lawyer fees are the same? It's just like closing a house. When I go to close on a house, they tell me how much I'm paying for the closing fees. What's the lawyer's fee?
Percentage of the contract, I don't remember off the top of my head.
That's what I mean.
I'll pull it up.
Who's the, who, what law firm's doing it?
We are.
You are?
Land and Sky?
So we don't know what the fees are?
It's a percentage.
Percentage?
I'm gonna pull it up. I'm not good at math, so I have to pull up the percentage and do the calculation. Give me some time.
Thank you, I appreciate that. You go on.
Any other questions?
Answer the thing, I'll go back if I get one.
Anybody else on this ordinance? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? I need a motion to adopt.
Second. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Agenda, public comment. Citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearings. Citizen shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of five minutes. I need a motion to open to the public on agenda item only.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Just looking for it. I just wanna make one statement here. Number one, I never called you corrupt. Number two, I don't agree with your citizens, okay? And Mr. Puccio, you proved my point. My point was about saying about the schools, it's the state officials that approve the school budget for the state. It's the state official, which two of them, Meadowsex County, the Assembly President and Lopez of Latau, who should be asking the investigation.
But wait a minute, that's not on the agenda.
I know, but I just wanted to answer this question. That's the point I'm bringing in, is that our officials and you as elected representatives should be saying, what is the problem here? Because those budgets come together, becomes our tax dollars. All right, the only thing I'm talking about is number five, under communications. This is Perth Damboi Waterfront Carver, Washington Street. People are playing baseball, what's polluted there? Did anybody look at that and say, what is polluted there? We paid, we paid $25 million for a park here. We gave somebody from the City of Perth Amboy $5 million saying that property was clean, which it wasn't. And the state had to come in and bring millions and millions of dollars. So that's a 25 to 27 to 28 million dollars. And I'm sure when I asked one of the guys down there when I walked on their property years before it was done, he said the price is still coming up, and he still had to get federal funds to do it. So where is this located that it's still polluted?
I don't know if it's per se still polluted. I know that I was told that that county owns that...
Bless you.
Oh, county owns that specific area, that park, and anytime work's being done there, there, there's an obligation to notify the city.
Yes.
But our kids are playing there. So if this is polluted, and our kids are there, or they're still doing some regal thing, where is it? That place was so polluted. I was there when the fire was. I was, hate to say that I'm old enough, but I was on the job when that place burnt up. And that had to do with the mob, and had to do with a lot of other things around here that you probably don't even know anything about. That place was raided, that area, it was chemicals galore. And every time it rained, you see all those chemicals running into the water, and you could see. So here we're talking, and I just seen it, that, that's that area. So is there still ground chemicals? Are there still in the air? Or where is it? Or is the building next door? Where is it? I mean, this is the same guy, I think...
Mr. Ballack?
Sure.
I can answer your question.
Oh, good, thank you.
I asked that question.
All right.
Me and you were the only two people that were there. They were talking about at the dead end of Washington Street to the left, where would be like right field, the baseball field. That area there where Dwayne Marine, when you went into Dwayne, that's the area they're talking about.
Right. Part of Dwayne Marine, if you looked at Dwayne Marine, that was all Washington Street. Because I was there when they raided it. And that property, Dwayne Marine, is where a park is right now. To the right is the only thing that's left. And when I was here with Mr. Farron back, they didn't wanna touch that property because that's how polluted it is. But do we have children going down there and playing? Or is it locked off enough that your kids are playing in such a polluted place? And if they're still investigating, get what is it? Is there a sign there? I know Cuscher's sign down, so we don't know right across where Cuscher's property is. Same company, I believe, was involved with, I got a picture somewhere in my house.
What, what I was told is it's a continuation of the investigation on the site, that every year they have to do something, and I guess this is the company that's doing it.
Right. So is there a sign there so that you can't get down that area? Is it safe for children?
And before I provide additional, you know, supposition of what went on there, I'm gonna get you the correct answer. I'm gonna give you a response, I'm gonna make sure the council members have it as well in writing. I have it, just give me, please, definitely by Friday morning, but I'll try and give it to you by tomorrow. Email to you too.
That area was so polluted, so bad, it's unbelievable.
Okay.
How bad it was.
I will definitely investigate, and I'll get your answer.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
But I did call you corrupt. I do agree with most of your statements, what you're doing. And a law firm, I think, is taking advantage of you, and that's my opinion. Have a great day, and have better tomorrow.
You too.
Doctor loves you. Look, look, right here, it's mine.
Anybody else? On the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I need a motion to close public comments.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Minutes?
We have to approve, right?
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the following meeting. January 10, 24, 2024, February 14, 28, 2024, March 13, 27, 2024, April 10, 2024, and the special council meeting, March 2024. I need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
I will abstain.
Councilman Puccio?
Yeah.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Okay, reports. Jill A. Goldie, CFO, Controller, submitted the following reports. Check Register Report for the month of February 2025 in the total amount of $15,186,989 with 61 cents. Investment Report for the month of February 2025, and the summary of proposals for underwriting services prepared by the city's financial advisor. Ordinance, first reading, no public discussion. I need a mo... number one, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy, County of Meadowsex, amending and supplementing Chapter 4 Administration of Government, Article 12 Department of Human Services, ordinance number 152022-2010, as amended August 11, 2020, of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy, to set forth regulation for the Department of Human Service employees, volunteers, and contract personnel to operate vehicles owned by the city. I need a motion?
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number two, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy, County of Meadowsex, New Jersey, to amend an ordinance entitled "Vehicles and Traffic," ordinance number 194-78, as amended, adopted September 19, 1978, also known as Chapter 414 of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy, and this is about the stop sign on Amboy Avenue. I need a motion?
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
All in favor? Oh, sorry.
Councilwoman Cruz, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number three, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces for Use by Handicapped Persons," ordinance number 380-85, an amendment, adopted July 2, 1985, also known as Chapter 255 of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. This is about addition. I need a motion?
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number four, bond ordinance amending Section 3D of the bond ordinance, number 1953-2020, and Section 3B of bond ordinance, number 2004-2021, of the City of Perth Amboy and the County of Meadowsex, New Jersey, in order to amend the project description. I need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Go Stacy.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Look over the agenda and tell me what you want to pull. I wanna pull R. 140. Good?
I'm good, I'm good.
Wait a minute.
Time to go.
Your time is up.
Time to go.
We gotta go home now.
All right, the, I need a motion for the consent agenda, R. 136-325 through... R. 139-325, then R. 141-325 through R. 157-325. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yeah.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. R. 143-25, approving a special permit for public entertainment to United Dominican of Perth Amboy for the Dominican Festival to be held on August 8, 9, 10, 2025, at the Robert Williams Athletic Field on First Street and Sadowski Parkway. I need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number two, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy, County of Meadowsex, New Jersey, to amend an ordinance entitled "Vehicles and Traffic," ordinance number 194-78, as amended, adopted September 19, 1978, also known as Chapter 414 of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy, and this is about the stop sign on Amboy Avenue. I need a motion?
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
All in favor?
Oh, sorry. Councilwoman Cruz, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number three, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Designing Restricted Parking Spaces for Use by Handicapped Persons," ordinance number 380-85, an amendment, adopted July 2, 1985, also known as Chapter 255 of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. This is about addition. I need a motion?
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. R. 143-25, approving a special permit for public entertainment to United Dominican of Perth Amboy for the Dominican Festival to be held on August 8, 9, 10, 2025, at the Robert Williams Athletic Field on First Street and Sadowsky Parkway. I need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
I abstain. Public portion, five minutes maximum per speaker. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, on anything, you can come up and speak.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Um... Puccio and Ballack, that was pretty good. That was excellent about the school. You know, I said a poem one time, I got thrown out of a school board meeting, Johnny can't read, Johnny can't spell, that's why Johnny's in the NFL. And they flipped out. Someone laughed, someone took offense to it. But here's the real deal. Our school system in New Jersey is in trouble, okay? It is everybody issue. City official, school board official. And every day you look at the paper, and the schools are in trouble. Their kids are not getting a fair chance. School units are fighting with this, they're fighting with that, the school board, nobody knows who's controlling the school board, would you believe that? Nobody knows. Who's in charge? They don't know. It's just one big figure pointing contact. And every time you're reading the paper, I just remember one where a school said, we don't got no money, we don't know who could pay the teachers. Where's the money going? I used to work school construction. You couldn't believe the amount of money they spent on school construction, and it was no accountability. I think when Corzine was governor, $9 billion in school construction in 10 years, and nobody had no accountability. They looked the other way. Our school system is in deep trouble, believe it or not. This is no laughing matter. It's serious. That's why some city officials said, we wanna take control of the school board, we wanna handle the schools now, because we see what you're doing. Parents are complaining. This is why, in fact, in Philadelphia, there's no public schools, there are charter schools in Philadelphia. I thought, that's interesting, because my cousin lives in Philadelphia, and they have major problems there in Philadelphia with the schools. Here, California, all over. Over 20, 30 years now, the school system has failed. Failed the kids, failed the parents, and failed the city. People like you, they just lie to you. Mind your own business. In fact, I'll give you a good example, if I may. They put a school here, Seaman Street, and they said, don't build it there, it's gonna cause problems, it's gonna cause a lot of problems. The fire trucks, whatever, blah, blah, blah. And it was city official, please, don't build that school here, don't. It's not made for this, this area. It's gonna affect the traffic, and also the park department. You know what they told them? Mind your own business and put the school there. This is no joke. They tell you, city official, top official, mind your own business, the school's going or you're liking or not. You can't make this up. The school system here in New Jersey got out of control. And you should know, Mr. Puccio, because you're in the school board. I bet they said things to you we cannot discuss here. Sir, man to man, and you probably went home and shaking your head, I can't believe this is happening. Because I went to one or two school board meetings, I see you shaking, like, you're going like this.
That's true.
It's, it's...
I'll just say, you know...
Go ahead, give me your feedback.
Well, you know, at the end of the day, when it, when it comes to building the schools, a lot of times the towns don't have a real say in where it goes. You know, the SDA will pick a site, you know, they're, we, like with the high school, and you know, they say, no, we're only gonna build it there. And the same thing with Rose Lopez, same thing happened there where, you know, they were gonna give us the money, and that's the only place they were gonna build it.
Real quick, we did a school up in North Jersey, we did another section there, and they said, oh yeah, they're gonna remove the asbestos. That takes time and money and work. Okay, that was on Friday. I come Monday to bring some stuff down there, this other contractor, I said, wow, they did the, the school kitchen right away. Yeah, they took plywood, they put it over the tile, on asbestos, and they put regular tile. And they claimed that they removed the asbestos out of the school. Like I said, no, nobody really looked at it, okay? It was amazing, when they had to go to Corzine that time, you spent $9 billion on schools, and there was no transparency. You have any records? And Corzine was like this, I really don't know. He was on the record with Michael Allen, on PBS, on New Jersey Network News. The governor actually admitted it, they told him. You've got no transparency on the schools? And he's like this, no, no. And by the way, Corzine got in a lot of trouble with Wall Street, he was on a federal investigation. He had a, a House, what do they call it, Judiciary Committee, he had to testify. He took people's money, and he was spending it. That's how messed up it is. It's a shame, it really is a shame. It's sad.
Thank you.
Those who are on the school board, I feel sorry for them.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, council comments. Councilwoman Cruz?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for being here. So we have the grand opening of the Superior Diner coming up on Friday. I know that a lot of our residents are super excited. The food is absolutely amazing. And of course, as always, the library does an amazing job with the Women's History Month on Saturday as well. So just keep in touch with our website, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morales?
Just wanna thank everybody for, you know, attending today and participating. Really don't have much to say. I've already, I think, said it earlier, what I've had to say. And just have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes. Basically, picking back off of what everyone else was saying, I just want to say thank